Alright, it is six PM. I'm gonna call this meeting to order. Um, for your mind, let's start with the pledge of allegiance called by a moment of silence. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And now a moment of silence if we think about those who've gone before us. Thank you very much. Okay, um, roll call, please.
Mayor Allen.
I am present and caffeinated and have candy.
Very good. Deputy Mayor Ryan.
Here.
Trustee Alter.
Hi.
Trustee Decker.
Here.
Trustee O'Malley absent. Trustee Shuttick.
Here.
And Trustee Walton.
Here.
Also present Attorney Gilchrist.
What's Kevin's excuse?
Uh.
Election still?
He had a little bit of a long night slash morning. Alright, great, um. The first, so before we go any further, we have two public hearings on the agenda. The first one, which I think was scheduled for six o'clock, is a public hearing regarding local introductory local law number three of two thousand and twenty-two. A local law authorizing the issuance of temporary permits for outdoor dining and for sidewalk sales display. Um, as with any new law, once it goes through committee and gets reviews and red lines and recommendations from our attorney, gets introduced, we set a public hearing for the next meeting, hear what people have to say, review any comments that may have been sent in. Uh, then it's the board's discretion if they want to move forward with that or not. Uh, let me put this local law up on the screen, just bear with me for one minute. I know we have a massively huge crowd tonight, so I'm sure it'll take us a lot of time to get through everything. Yeah, okay, alright. Okay. So this is the introductory local law number three of the year two thousand and twenty-two. This was something that came to us from recommendations from business owners who wanted to, uh, start taking advantage of the outdoors for dining, especially in the season of COVID. Uh, this is on the website, it's been available at the village office.
Rob, excuse me.
Yeah.
We need a motion to open the public hearing.
Oh geez, I'm sorry, alright, thank you.
Motion.
I'm looking for a motion.
Thank you.
Second, thank you. Do we have to vote on that too?
No.
Man, I feel like a newbie today, jeez. Alright.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you for interrupting. Uh, so this local law is up, uh, has been out, we've been talking about it, we got it developed, goes through quite a bit. At this point, since we're a public hearing, I will open the floor to anyone who'd like to speak on it.
Including us?
Including us.
I think it's a really great idea and really important.
Just like, don't worry about garbage trash, but part of the permit process would be cleaning it up.
Do we have anything specific to there?
I think, I, I can answer that, I, Kevin and I have been talking to about, we need, definitely need more garbage cans in the community. So, we should, you know, we can definitely look into that and then, you know, I mean, we'll just definitely target that area and have to, you know, make sure that. But at the same time, they, the, the people who are getting permits gotta take some responsibility as well.
I think they will.
I do, I do too.
Got a gen right in the table there for you.
That could also be something in there.
Alright, yeah, you wanna speak?
Uh, yes, uh, do I have to give my name?
Oh yeah, sorry, name and addresses.
Sorry, uh, Tanya Suriem Blair, uh, forty-fourth street.
Thank you.
Um, just a, a thought on that, I mean, I work, uh, for Runser County, I do the Meals on Wheels, spent there five years, uh.
Nice.
Lived in town my whole life. Um, with, with the garbage, um, it's, I tell you, those garbage cans, the one in front of the Runser County building, the Meals on Wheels, the, where the, in case anybody doesn't know where DMV is, um, that is constantly overflowing, there's constantly garbage because it blows out.
Okay.
Is there a set day that they come to empty those because, I mean, they did it one day and then like it was like two weeks and then they did another day, I just, it's like a day?
It's, Neil, what's the, what's the regular schedule for when we pick those things up?
Uh, we can get a free chance and then.
Okay. It's typically at least a minimum weekly, right?
Yeah, we try to do it weekly.
That seems like that one gets the most use.
It does, it's, it's a high-traffic, you know, footwalk, you know, that kind of stuff, Chinese, pump bees.
Okay.
Big king kong bees and, yeah, exactly.
Yep.
Yeah, I mean, and I'm sure that's not the only garbage can, but I see it every day, so I was just curious.
No? That's fine, well, uh.
I, I was curious about that.
Yeah, thank you, move on that. Thanks. Um, anyone else wanna speak to the local law? Neil?
Rob, I have had a chance to look at that, um, are there measurements and stuff as far as displays or table sizes or any of that kind of stuff in there?
ADA requirements.
You know.
So, it's, um, it's, it's not about the, um, I'm being familiar with this, it's not necessarily about the width and the displays, it's about the amount of cleaners for people to get through. So, under the ADA, you gotta have thirty-six inches for a wheelchair, there's just some other rules about when you come to an area, you need to reach on it, uh, there's so many deep, uh, area, you gotta walk, just so you have a little path in there, so.
Well, you get, remember some of them, sidewalks, something from that place, that's, it goes flat and how the sun hits, got agreed to them, so, you know. There's uneven, so.
These are some of the rules specific to, uh, oh, and is this the sales or is this the, uh, sign?
It's the displays.
That's the dis, this is the displays, right? Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, not to exceed thirty inches in width, ten feet in length.
That look, that actually looks like your old one. I was gonna say.
No, is that, is that?
There, there was an old one, we incorporate a lot of what had been in the existing.
Right, I ha, I have them.
Is this the old one I'm looking at?
No, no.
No.
Okay, okay.
This is it, um, we incorporated.
So if you go down earlier into section four, Rob, there's the regulations for the outdoor dining.
Yeah, please. Yeah, what number?
Four.
Well, section four, and then you'll see right there the general operating rules, so.
Thank you. Knew I was gonna drop the candies everywhere, I knew it.
Yeah, I, I just remember, remember one night on a dog walk and you now had tables, so you pretty much had to walk out into the street for that, uh, when you had some of the plants. You know, the main thing is making sure people can get out with wheelchairism and whatever.
Well, the thing is, having, him having them out there now is without the permit because, you know, he just took the liberty of doing it, that's why this is coming about, but.
Mike does it.
Now, once we issue the permit though, oh, Mike does it right, yes, and, but once the permit has to be, you know, Mark can also make sure that they understand that when the permit is issued. Right, correct me if I'm wrong, Mark will be the one issuing the permit, right?
Yeah, correct.
Yes, and, Andy, if, would the police, could the police be involved in enforcement of this?
Yeah, it's principally a permit issued if it's the building department.
Okay.
So if it's a violation of the issued permit, our penalties provided, he could bring them into village board and a monetary penalty can be assessed.
Do we, do we have a, um, standard permit for, that people apply for stuff, or would it be a permit that we write for this?
Probably would need to be, so, I don't know the answer to that.
No, but I, I think you, I.
We don't have.
We need a specific permit.
I, I, it's gonna have to be specific to this, I would, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, so that's in the permit?
They can't take, they can't can put that in, same with any other building code enforcement.
Mm-hmm.
So, in the permit, can we write, you know, you are responsible for cleaning up, you could be fined or something, or, you know?
Oh. See, what, huh, right, isn't that part of the, I mean, that's.
I believe, isn't there a requirement that there be like a drawing or something by the foundation of what you, I'm trying to find.
Well, there's a couple ideas we're talking about here, but, I mean, I think before the permit is made, Andy, it would make sense to have, you know, village attorney review that.
Sure.
So, we could certainly make sure to build in that language and just mention to Mark.
The, the good thing is we have some time because I don't think there's any outdoor dining. Last week might have been a different story, but I don't think it's gonna be for.
Yeah, yeah. Good. Okay. Any other questions on this? In typical, peculiar Huesig Falls fashion, we'll leave the public hearing open, a little bit longer in case, um, anyone would like to speak to it.
Can open the second one.
And separately, we will move on, if that's alright, Andy, to the second.
Kevin, if I could just note too, if you were correct about a floor plan, under the outdoor dining, there is a requirement, uh, to provide a floor plan diagram with the total square footage of the property to be used for the outdoor dining,
Sure, please.
location of tables, chairs, pedestrian dining areas, width and length of dining area, fire access, ADA access, location of any tents or warnings, any permanent obstructions like signs, utility calls, hydras, if there is gonna be a change here about trash receptacles, that'd be the spot to consider that.
Okay.
So, that, that's probably a good idea to have that.
Oh, I agree.
Yeah, I would think so.
It, it, yeah, but.
Was there a generic thing about here being, is there any generic, do we just refer to like, uh, being captured a state in a generic condition or something?
I don't think, yes, we could conclude from, how to prove it. It does say applicant must provide existing indoor capacity to restaurant or other food service establishment based on their current CO and/or their county health department approvals. Permit for the outdoor dining cannot exceed the occupancy for the indoor dining, so not adding that to the, but don't see anything, Dan, that's just generic to, to, sanitary. We deal with music, we deal with hours, we deal with lighting, we deal with plot plan tables, there may be something that could be added to deal with trash receptacles or sanitary conditions.
Add that right to the permit, already said, Andy.
Or would we make, would we make it a law?
Or into that.
It shouldn't be in your law, so that it's clear that that has to be shown on the plot plan, I guess, you know.
Okay. So, and if we wanna add to this law, we would have to re, we'd have to table it and basically reintroduce it next time, correct?
Yep.
Yeah, that's a substantive change, not just a typographical change, but that's the whole purpose of the topic.
No. Absolutely, absolutely.
Something's come up.
Okay. Any other questions, thoughts? Alright, I will, uh, come back to that in a moment because we have a second public hearing. This is a public hearing regarding introductory local law number four of two thousand and twenty-two. This is a local law placing restrictions on the discharge of firearms and crossbows in the village of Huesig Falls. Uh, so I'm looking for a motion to, um, um.
I'll make a motion to introduce.
Open the public hearing.
Open the public hearing, I was like, open the people to be heard, it's not the right thing.
Sorry.
Alright, thank you Bobby, thank you many, hi, guys, come on in. Welcome up. Uh, okay, so the public hearing is open, uh, in review, this is our introductory local law number four, that we are looking, um, have the ability, I don't know why the computer's being, we're with the cable. Um, have the potential to, um, move on or like in the previous one, possibly come with some edits. Uh, this initially came from a situation in the village that brought a lot of concern, um, and in dealing, discussing the situation. Uh, as oftentimes happens with the police department, we realize that there are a lot of things the police department can do and there's a lot of things the police department can do unless we have the laws in it. So, we brought up the concern about wanting to place limits on, um, the use of firearms within the village, uh, bounds, and that came to this law. Um, Andy, do you wanna summarize any other points in it?
Nope, that, that's it.
Okay.
I just have, in regards to, the, excuse me, Andy, of the crossbows, um, so was that part of like, uh, like an N-Con, was that something drawn from that as well, Andy, or no, or? Where did the fire, the, I had someone ask me, that's all, I was just curious as to.
Nope, it's. Yeah, it's, it's not the E.C., it is in some other laws that restrict the use of firearms, including crossbow, that was an option and I know Maggie recommended it, and so we put that in.
Right. It was a, yeah, it was a.
Okay. Well, right, the reason, and the reason I'm asking is, I mean, is people who reside in the village, you know, target, they don't, you target practice with the, with the crossbow, used to be able to practice with a crossbow, I mean, I guess, and I know that crossbow can travel much farther than the regular bow, but I just, I was just wondering where that came from, that's all, because I.
Yeah, it was a, it was a concern, yeah, true.
Alright. Anyone else I'd just speak regarding the, this law? So, we will leave this, uh, public hearing open as well, we'll revisit these later in the meeting and again, as with local laws that have come before the board, been formally introduced and seen in a public hearing. Um, once we close the public hearing, it's the board's discretion if they want to, uh, vote it down, pass it, table it, go back to the drawing board and start over with some changes, so. Alright, I'm gonna come back to this. And we are going to move on. Okay, we are on announcements now. Uh, first off, zoning and planning board, we're still looking for one more person in each board. Uh, number two, lead pickup, uh, has been going very smoothly, with the exception of a few days where the equipment was under repair. Uh, thanks to our DPW guys and to Saint Cobain, who had a part that we needed immediately, um, which got us, uh, back up and running, so that was a pleasant surprise. Um, and we are running through November twenty-first, so if you are like me and we'll have the, be the last tree with leaves on and everyone else is down on the property, we still got some time.
Rob, I just, I just have a question, I worked up, um, New York codes on garbage, refuse, storage and disposal, because it does say in the law that it can require all of the regulations, tell me if this will be applicable.
Sure.
Garbage and refuse, storage and disposal, garbage and refuse are to be stored, handled and dispoh, I'm sorry, next section. Garbage and refuse is to be kept in a durable, easily cleanable, insect-proof, rodproof, or well-applied to the next year, if you reuse, uh, for storage inside and outside. Okay, here it is, disposed of in a manner that protects food and food contact surfaces from contamination and the premiseses, premises from litter.
That's.
So it may not need, need to amend it. Gar, one fourteen, one point one five oh, garbage and refuse, storage and disposal, garbage and refuse are to be stored, handled and disposed of in a manner that protects food and food contact surfaces from contamination and the premises from litter. It's, uh, it's fourteen dash one point one five oh. Trying to see what section of the law it is.
So it's.
New York codes rules.
Yeah, that, that, that's, no, but that's the set of the state regulations, it's not in the statute, that's probably the state health department's regulations, the New York code of rules and regulations and that, that's probably the section dealing with.
Would that be sufficient?
Be better than.
What I say is maybe, it, I think showing on a plot plan where your trash receptacles on the outside would be, that would at least provide Mark with an opportunity to say, how many tables, should there be one, should there be more, we, we got an issue.
Should we also add to that to be, uh, eighteen, uh, holes in that, just not be overflowed in a manner or something?
Sure. You know, we may want to build in, if we're going to add this to the, to our law, we may wanna specifically prohibit them from using the garbage cans that we have out because those wouldn't really be up to code for handling of, of food, so we may need to build into that, they may need to have their own garbage cans that they bring out and bring back in at night or something like that.
That's good, because if they're not out all night, then nobody's gonna, not gonna do it.
Yeah, and it would also address that it will be the business owner's responsibility to handle the garbage in a proper manner, uh, and not the village's because there's gonna be other regulations tied to the garbage. Yeah?
Okay.
Alright, great, yeah, well, we can keep bringing up, bringing up anything related to those two, uh, local laws for a bit longer. Alright, back to announcements, uh, number three, we do have a request from the Town of Huesig Lions Club to use the village park as they have done in the past. Uh, this will be on December third, and they said maybe December fourth, so I just put both dates in there, for their annual Christmas tree sale, this is of course Wood Park in the village. So if that is good with the board, I'll entertain a motion to approve, uh, that request. Thank you Bobby Decker, in depth, second, uh, further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Close their extensions, carries?
Do the December twenty-fourth while you're there.
Uh, yes, I don't know if I put that in here, did I put it in there?
It's on there. Yeah, it's on there, on number five.
Oh, it's coming, yep, alright, it's coming in a minute.
Number five, you don't have five.
I don't have five.
What's, oh, you must have an old one, should grab one of the, well, that is what it is.
That's okay.
Um, uh, Toys for Joy twenty-two, the village of Huesig Falls will sponsor the Toys for Joy twenty-two campaign again this year. Uh, will be working with community members, churches and local organizations to help those in the village that can use some help this holiday season. The Toys for Joy box will be in the municipal building lobby, starting the week of November fourteenth, uh, and running through December ten. Um, by the way, the police officers do check them and bring things in on a regular basis, so there's nice items aren't just sitting out there in the lobby all the time, that was a concern from the past. Uh, for people to drop off new and unwrapped gifts, if you have any questions, Marie, as village clerk and as just being an awesome Marie, has taken this on, uh, leading it, so thank you. You can reach out to her at the village office or at her, uh, clerk email address. Uh, we also have a request to, uh, use the gazebo for a wedding on December twenty-fourth, Christmas Eve. Um, who's, uh, who's getting married?
If I could read the handwriting, it's Dan, it's Dan Urban.
Oh, Dan Urban?
In the way of someone.
Okay. Oh, Dan Urban.
So, do we know the exact, have the use?
Oh, it's, 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 it's a, it's a surprise, it's a surprise and it's an elopement, so he asked that we did not, but the public.
Just approve it.
Yeah.
Oh, wow.
Whoops, whoops, okay, no one heard that.
That's not going in anything.
Alright, no one heard that.
I guess I should have mentioned that early.
Um.
I'll make a motion that we approve the use of the gazebo for December twenty-fourth for a marriage wedding.
Thank you. The only thing I always wanna suggest was, there's gonna be decorations there from whoever does that, so they just need to know that.
Yes, and he's very happy about that.
Great, alright, uh, further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Close their extensions, carries, thank you. Uh, and finally, village elections, um, one day after elections, we're already talking about elections. Uh, the village election calendar works differently, uh, our election will be on March twenty-first, uh, two thousand and twenty-three. It will run from noon to nine at village hall in Bor, Municipal Building. Um, the terms start right in the beginning of April. Uh, the following seats are up, there are two trustee seats that are two-year terms, one trustee seat that is a one-year term, and one mayor seat that is a two-year term. Megan's the one year, because I think she hopped in midterm or something like that.
Yeah.
And then, um, Kevin and Bobby?
Yeah, it's, it's me and Kevin, I think.
And then obviously me for the two-year. Um, individuals may start gathering signatures in the new year on January third. The earliest the petitions can be filed is February seventh, and the last day they can be filed, uh, is February fourteenth. That's how you get your name on the ballot and petitions are filed with the village clerk, the municipal building. Uh, we're not exactly sure what the exact requirement our signatures are, fifty or seventy-five or something like that, we're gonna.
We go with seventy-five, we've been, we've had to check that.
We're gonna, yeah.
Are justices, judge on there?
We'll check that. Not this time.
Not this, okay, just wanna make sure.
We checked, we checked.
I knew he was, I just wanna make sure.
Yeah, yeah, he's got four years.
Okay.
Okay.
This just puts everybody back on the two-year track.
Correct.
Yes, it will.
It does.
Until someone decides to move out of there.
Right, the appointment.
Alright.
But nobody's allowed to move outside the village.
Correct, not again. Alright, um, the first of two mayor updates, uh, our Department of Public Works superintendent, Neil Stoll, has announced his intention to retire. He's announced that he will be, uh, looking to retire in late January of two thousand and twenty-three. Um, Neil has been working for the village since eighty-nine, Neil?
Eighty-seven.
Eighty-seven, I will not tell you how old I was in the year nineteen eighty-seven. I had not yet hit double digits.
Don't tell us.
Uh, so Neil's been working in the village most of my life, and.
I was practicing law, I think.
Um.
Real.
Um, so, three-plus decades, uh, started as just an employee of the DPW, works his way up and has been leading for quite some time, well past, uh, my time when I started as mayor. Um, I will of course, um, do lots more, um, as that time comes, um, to honor Neil, but we are, uh, very thankful for his work and, uh, we will work to solidify the retirement date in a future resolution. Um, and, you know, just the kinda guy Neil is, he didn't have to do this in advance and work with us, he could have just said it and named a date and let us do our thing, but that's not now, not how Neil works, um, and he's, uh, gonna make sure that we have the time to work out a transition so that we can continue to do what we do. So, thank you Neil.
He just doesn't wanna pick up a branch.
That was, that was the camel.
At least it's a.
That was, yeah, yeah.
The actual branches of the straw.
That's real.
Um, so, hard announcement number two, village attorney Andy Gilchrist has also announced his intention to step down as village attorney. Uh, Andy started serving with us, um, I looked it up, October of two thousand and seventeen was your first meeting, uh, when John Patterson officially retired. Um, Andy, as I said in here, he has been, uh, full of knowledge, wisdom and guidance for the village, um, and in some very, very hard times, uh, has always come through for us. Um, and of course, because Andy is also a stand-up guy, he has agreed to stay on while the village pursues a new attorney. Um, we've already started the process, or, uh, to search for a new attorney, we're gonna be looking to set up, uh, interviews probably in the coming weeks, and I'll talk to you guys more about that in executive. Um, but, um, our, my goal is that at the December meeting, uh, we have somebody new in place so that Andy can, uh, hop off into the sunset of whatever happens next, uh, in Andy, uh, as he continues to do what he does great, so, uh, I'll have more to say in, uh, in their final meetings, but, uh, you know, thank you guys, thank you both, uh, for your time.
Do we have to accept them? It has.
Alright.
Both are gonna be missed.
Absolutely, absolutely. Alright, so we're gonna move on to the people-to-be-heard section, this is where we open it up to anyone, um, who would like to speak about concern or anything related to village business. Um, as we do normally, we ask you to share your name and your street address, um, and as a reminder, uh, we audio record meetings and they eventually end up on YouTube, uh, so it'll be recorded in posterity forever. Would anyone like to speak about anything? Okay. Hearing none, we will move on, um, board, are you content to close the other two public hearings at the same time? Is that alright, uh, Andy? Alright, so I'm looking for a motion to close the public hearing regarding introductory local law number three. Uh, motion, you wanna second that Deb? Sorry, alright.
What's that?
Uh, motion by Megan and, uh, second by Deb.
Deb.
Um, further discussing, all in favor of closing the public hearing?
Aye.
Aye, close their possessions, carries, and I'm also looking for a motion to close the public hearing regarding introductory local law number four. Thank you Megan, thank you Deb, uh, further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Close their possessions, carries, alright, public hearings are done, we will revisit those, uh, in the new business later in the meeting. Um, minutes, or we'll go reports first, uh, police report, trustees, you guys have the report packets and, um, despite all of the work you guys in the police department have been doing in the past, uh, week, we still got the report data in, so, um, Paul, take it away.
Well, um, I, I don't know if anybody has any question for me on the report, um, we're looking to, a couple items, we need a new computer for the station. Um, looking to get approval for the five-year agreement for the tasers.
Mm-hmm.
Um, looking to get approval for two cell phones for the police use, and I guess the last one's, you're gonna bring out, um, but I'm looking for approval for the first three, uh, items.
Yep. So we can certainly hop to that, it's under new business on page three, under the Huesig Falls P.D. Um, if that's alright with the board, you guys good to hop there, alright.
Yeah.
Uh, so, we, uh, first, uh, let me bring up the quote. Uh, one of three police department computers is making a sound like it's going to explode at any minute. So, um, we have been using Diagnostic Services and Installation LLC, um, with the police department for years. Uh, phenomenal, they're, they're great at what they do, they've been involved in all the networking and all the rewiring in there, so, um, we got a quote for them for one replacement computer. Um, it's a thousand dollars computer, it will come with a twenty-four inch monitor, it will also come with, uh, installation and a Microsoft Office Professional two thousand and twenty-one perpetual license, which means it's a, you got it, you don't have to pay a hundred and whatever every year for subscription, you just do it. Um, originally the quote was for two, um, I thought about trying to, to spread things out and I thought we needed this one now, we can get a similar computer to match it very closely the next year and we'll kind of start a year rotation if we need to. Um, so this quote, which would be the new computer, um, Microsoft Office software monitor installation, uh, would be grand total of eighteen oh five. Um, so if that is, uh, alright, unless you guys have any questions, I will entertain a motion to, uh, approve the purchase of this new computer. Thank you. Bobby and Megan, further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Close their possessions, alright, carries, great.
And I think that's a great idea that we, like you said, buy one now and then kind of do like, set up a program so that we're rotating annually, we're getting a new computer
Yep. Yep.
And that way we're not facing sometimes having two of them die at the same time.
Yeah, and the other computer that we'll be replacing at the next fiscal year, probably in the summertime, that one has been here since I've been here, so that's going on six years. The third computer is, was actually like new last year, so that's in good shape, so by doing this, we're gonna be in good shape for quite some time.
Now that Neil's retiring, we're gonna. Now that Neil's retiring, we're gonna do that with the highway, we're gonna get a new, new dump truck every two years now that Neil's retiring.
What's the, uh, company, again on that?
Uh, that is Diagnostic Services and Installation.
Diagnostic, thank you.
Alright, so that was the, um, PC installation, you wanna talk about the tasers for a minute? Oh, and, and just a, a, as a quick aside, I'm sorry, what was that?
Need a copy of that diagnostics, but that's okay.
I will, I can for, oh, I forwarded that to you in the attachments, I just sent it out before the meeting. Um, I, I, one of the trustees or a couple trustees had asked, um, Officer Hudson did do a training on the current tasers, so all of our.
Yeah, Kevin, Kevin, I think Kevin asked, was it?
Yeah, so all of our officers are, are now certified and then they'll have to do some sort of refresher when they need to.
Once new tasers, right?
Um, so, this we got a quote on, it ends up being a five-year commitments for just under two thousand per year, so it's a five-year contract. Uh, for the tasers, I know we've talked about this quite a bit, it will give us, uh, five tasers, um, cartridges, supplies, so on and so forth, um, all built into that, lots of fun things to do in there.
If I'm reading from wrong, we're, we're currently already paying four hundred and something, uh, I think, to this, to Axon.
To finish off the last, uh, commitments?
Like, I believe so.
I think so.
Right, that's a problem, and then I know I, I checked with Denise, I know we thought we were currently paying something, we talked about that and yeah, actually, I think it's on that, it may be on that quote, actually.
Um, and actually, one of the, I, we, we initially were trying to figure out the last time we'd done this, but I think the company had a different name, I think the company was actually literally called Tasers.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so, okay, yeah, okay.
Megan knows.
Um, so in talking with, um, Andy about purchases, uh, we knew this was a uh, what's the, what's the term when it's only one, one company?
Soul squares.
Soul, so, thank you. Uh, so Andy put together a resolution for this purchase, um, is that alright if I go on to this?
Absolutely.
Yes.
Okay, so this is a resolution authorizing agreement with Axon Enterprises Incorporated for TASER services for the police departments. Um, whereas village of Housit Falls Police Department desires to utilize the service of Axon Enterprises Incorporated for TASER-related services as more fully described in the attached fi- uh, five-year agreement proposal at a total cost of nine thousand eight hundred eighty-seven twenty-six. And the approval of such agreement and proposal appearing to be within the message of the village. Um, and the next whereas identifies him as, uh, as a sole source, um, so skipping down now therefore be it resolved. Uh, let me zoom in, by the Board of Trustees of the Village of Housit Falls in regular session, duly convened as follows, one, the Board of Trustees of the Village of Housit Falls hereby approves the agreement with Axon Enterprises Incorporated in the form and content as attached here too for the term of five years and a total amount of nine dollars eight hundred eighty-seven dollars seventy-six cents, and the mayor's authorized to execute such agreement on behalf of the Village of Housit Falls, I need someone to offer the resolution and seconds.
How many, motion?
Thank you, Bobby, Megan, alright, questions for the discussion, board? Alright, resolution requiring roll call vote, so roll call vote, please.
Trustee shouting?
This is for the T, I should probably, um.
Tasers, five years.
Yeah, I should probably, uh, because the cops carrying.
Yep.
Okay, trustee Emilia Zapsen, trustee Alter.
Yep.
Trustee Decker.
Yep.
Megan already motioned and Brooke Bob already.
Well, they have to vote, they have to, they still get to say yes.
Yeah, okay.
Yes, yes.
Yes, yes, and Mary Ellen, yes, yes, and yes.
I'm a yes too. Awesome. Alright, thank you, passes, do you wanna talk to the two cell phones for a moment?
Well, yeah, we're looking to just get approval for two cell phones, um. Number one, if we're out in the field and we need to take pictures, um, if it come down to a court case, our personal cell phones would be taken as evidence. Um, plus, if we need to contact somebody while we're in the field, again, people don't, or officers don't want their personal cellphone numbers out there. These would be assigned directly to the police and it would be for a police use only.
So, yeah, this suggestion came up, um, and it's just really, really good and really important. Um, I spoke with Andy and I spoke with Denise. Instead of going with a new service and going with a new contract and having to go through the procurement policy this way, we can add it as a simple motion that would authorize the mayor to, and now this actually would be two parts. Add two phones to our existing setup, but also, in talking with the phone service people, uh, Denise noted that the guy said our agreements are old, like our numbers are old and we're paying more than we need to be. So we'll actually be able to look at what we're paying now, make some adjustments and hopefully save money as well as get the new phones. So knowing that's the case, just looking for a motion to authorize the mayor and the treasurer to add two phones and re- and renegotiate the existing cellular plan. Thank you, Megan.
Second.
Alright, either, uh, so, just to quickly, uh, mention this, this is something we got real fast from, um, the provider to Denise, uh, the one we're looking at is an iPhone twelve and there's a couple different packages, there's a base value, if we just go with the sixty-four gig, but then there's the one twenty-eight, the two fifty-six. So, we're thinking iPhone twelve makes the most sense, I know that there's a huge difference between the iPhone twelve and the iPhone SE. Um, cuz I think my wife has that phone, um, but the iPhone twelve has a much stronger camera, which was what we're gonna want for evidence purposes, so, um.
Well, it's kinda like, yeah, the camera's good.
Yeah, so we're good for that, um, any other questions on that?
Are you buying like the, uh, out-of-box cases or?
Uh, I think you guys should use your normal equipment line to invest in the cases, absolutely. And it'll be a sign-out system, and that way.
Yeah, I think, I think we should make that, we should make sure that's, that happens.
Okay, absolutely.
Don't you agree?
Yeah.
That we use the out-of-box, yeah, because we don't need to be replacing screens and if they drop them, I just.
Yep, yep. So we don't need to make a motion for that, cuz I'll be on the normal equipment lines, I'll just go tell them to get, we got two really good cases and screen covers. But we'll, we'll get the phones first, um, any further discussion on this? And Dana will give the chance to abstain, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, oppose, abstain or recusal?
Recusal.
Thank you.
Alright, great, uh, so those were the three items, do you wanna address the other one real fast, or do you want me to do it?
Which one, the last one?
Yeah.
Just, we received a resignation letter from, uh, part-time officer Dan Shamedy, um, effective on October seventeenth.
I'll, I'll make the motion and accept that with regret.
Agreed with regret, um, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Close abstentions or recusals?
Aye. Me.
Alright, great, alright, thank you, anything else you wanna mention?
Just the, the one thing that we've been talking about for the last few months with the evidence system, I know it's hard, it's been kind of put on hold, but again, it's, it's something we really need and I hope the board can discuss it and we can move forward with that.
Yep, I think the support, um, without question, I think the support is there, of course, it's just a matter of trying to make the money stuff work.
You gotta find the money, right?
So, I think, and I'm hoping in, in, in a month's time, we'll be in a better position to properly forecast finances, so, that's my hope. Any questions for, um, the officer in charge, Alex Owens? Looking for a motion to approve the police report?
What do you get?
I have one question, sorry.
Go for it, no, 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 it's fine.
Police uniforms, do you guys purchase your own, like, I hear this and that about it, like, I don't know.
Not anymore.
Not anymore, okay, okay.
That's my, yeah, that's my answer, not anymore.
I just, I've heard it, you know, before I came on, okay.
What do you mean, you purchase their own, what do you mean?
Like, they have to, yeah.
They pay for them?
Individual ones?
Some guys in the past have.
Individual ones?
Like, just, no, like, I think they should be reimbursed for such.
No, it's built into the contract at least to get.
I guess, it's in the contract. Okay.
Believe me, it is, I, some guys did in the past.
Okay.
Okay.
Oh, I got you, but it's in the contract that you, your, your, it should, it's provided, I know that.
Okay, just random question.
Yes, and if they're recent ones, they should reach out to the union to reach out to the village to get that taken care of. Alright, um, so, uh, we have the motion, uh, all in favor of approving the police report?
Aye.
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 Close their abstentions or recusals, alright. Uh, code enforcement report, Mark is not present, he's been out for a couple days, um, I did send a few updates outs um, to the board, uh, on that, um, I just also gave the opportunity for anyone to ask questions, I don't know if there's any other questions you guys have. We can certainly try to, uh, take them on, otherwise we'll accept a motion to approve the code enforcement report.
Does anybody know, uh, maybe it's, uh, well, I guess, I don't know, it's codes of code enforcement, but Addison's feet, so they keep buildings and all that, is, uh, one fourteen church go, actually going up for auction?
We don't know that, it, it was supposed to go the last two years of the county, but they didn't do it.
I, I've heard, like, the, the reason I bring it up is I've heard that there are a week in November or whatever, but there is a roof leak there, I don't believe it requires from, I'm talking to Mark, it's something that requires um, a whole new roof we put on or whatever, but we may wanna consider, it is a nine-unit building, um, the cost of demolition would be substantial. Uh, it, Craig Kennedy was filming it, that roof collapses, everything is considered to be as just discontaminated and the abatement costs exceeds the value of the building and it's over, so, we may wanna consider sending someone over there to fix that roof.
We don't own the building, how can we?
So, so I will tell you.
We don't own, we don't own, um, fifty-four church or?
Right, that, that would go through the process of.
We need to do the same.
Same process.
Identifying it as unsafe, getting that report, Mark can present that to you and then you go through that process, right?
County, right?
Yeah.
So, if the county just agreed to that, would we still have to go through the all the rigging?
No, because one of the things you first do is direct the owner to repair it, they can say, so if the county owns it, we're gonna have to.
That's what you like to, yeah.
And, and, and just, just to be fully out there, we've talked about this before, we got a tour of this spot in June of twenty twenty-one with permission from the county, and we have a video of that, and we have gotten permission to share that with people, so we, and we did see that there was evidence of a roof leak, it wasn't a huge one. Uh, but there, there was evidence of, but it didn't seem in any way imminent or structure affecting, but, you know, that was a little over a year ago. Um, but even the, the person who got the tour with us, who has fixed up buildings before, was like, that's not a big deal, you can take care of that stuff pretty easily.
Until it becomes.
Until it becomes a big deal, right.
So, I, I'm just saying that we should look into when Mark is back, and I can reach out to Mark when he's doing it. If it's something, I mean, if we're talking about just putting some EPDM and some rubber up there, some five-foot ass mesh, you're running about a five-hundred-dollar repair, I don't know what the cost of taking that building down is for demolition, it's gotta be substantial.
Yep. It would be close, we actually priced it out as a possibility through the Woods Brook, we had figured about a hundred thousand, including uh, having to cover traffic because it would be right up against twenty-two.
And then you, and then you have a big empty hole.
Yep.
You know, so, uh, and it's nine units, so, you know, you think you're just.
And it's viable right now.
Right, you, you, you fill that building with nine units, you put it back on the tax roll.
I think it's only six, but.
Still six units.
It's a great, it's a great spot.
Put it back on the tax roll, you're gonna make up your, even if we never got reimbursed a thousand dollars, it's, you're gonna make that up in two months, taxes, you know, right?
Yep. Yep.
And Mark should coordinate with, you know.
Yes.
I will speak with him, cuz I just don't, and it, it, it is a.
It's a great spot.
The, and the, and now with the Woodbrook thing, project done, you actually have parking, which was always the problem there, you know, so I think that somebody will, somebody will scoop that building up.
Yep, um. Yeah.
Did she go get that parking area from the county, did they give it to her?
Which parking area?
Not yet.
Not yet? Yeah.
Alright. Did we approve the code enforcement report?
We did not, we didn't.
Okay. Need a motion to approve the code enforcement report, thank you.
Motion.
Thank you, almost everybody at once, um, all in favor?
Aye.
Close or abstentions, carries, treasure report, um. You guys, I know, have it, is there any questions on anything in there? Um, uh, what isn't in there, which also won't be in Marie's, is the forty-eight hours before meeting, all the crazy things I asked them to, uh, take care of, so, thank you, Marie. Thank you, uh, Denise, um, unless you guys have questions, I will accept a, um, motion to approve the treasure report.
What do you get, second?
Thank you, Bob and Bobby, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Close or abstentions? Alright, clerk, deputy clerk, report, anything you wanna highlight?
Nope, so far, so good. We're working on the re-leveys to get those down to the county and the property taxes and outside water and sewer and.
We have a motion for that tonight to approve that.
Yep, we'll be doing the December billing the first week in December, yay.
Three question, five property changes, are there, um?
We've probably had a few more than that, like, four more came over today, actually, so we've had about nine property changes, uh, for this month.
Are those single families or they?
Families.
Single family, self-performing.
Single, yeah.
I'll make a motion, we.
Yeah, go for it.
Accept Marie's report as presented.
Thank you, Megan, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, close their abstentions, carries, since we're here, I have near the end of the new business. I'm looking for a motion to re-leveys the unpaid twenty-twenty-two property taxes and unpaid outside water sewer bills to Renzley County, would someone like to make that motion? Thank you, Dan.
Second.
Thank you, lots of people, but Bobby was loudest, um, further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Close their abstentions, carries, we're bouncing all over the place here.
Is that right, maybe we go on?
Highway Department reports, Neil, would you like to, uh, speak to what could be your third to last report ever?
Oh, I, I have a question for you, Neil, but as far as the sidewalks, so we're done with sidewalks for this calendar year, correct? Was all the sidewalks, uh, were all the sidewalks done that we had on the list that we had planned on?
There is, there were some pretty, pretty people that didn't get theirs done.
Okay. But all the sections of Main Street we had planned on getting done? The one which is between Eddie Place, right next to Eddie, yeah.
Turn the left to Vastrop, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, it was, we didn't want it, but it can't.
Right.
Not in this cold weather.
No, okay.
But that can be done.
And you just have to go back, you have to go back and seal those sidewalks, yeah, that's it, right, wait, wait thirty days and then seal them?
I opened them right at Thanksgiving, but it was still a little.
What is the ceiling?
It's a kind of big seal.
Is it tough? Could it be too cold that we can't use it?
Could be.
Alright, fingers crossed we get a couple warm days.
It just means, that side of Main Street won't be getting roots off, it just gets sand.
Okay, okay.
It says that's what it protects us from.
Yeah.
Alright, alright.
Neil, ballpark, how much, do we know, how much we're gonna give to the chips? I know Denise submitted a favor and you said it's in your report.
We were up, well, eighty-nine thousand, I think.
Okay.
Is that less than normal?
Well, it's, the regular chip, the pay in the yard, plus the winner, winner recovered, so it's the three combined.
Okay. Okay.
Yeah, she's gotta send me what's, the total, what's.
Okay.
We might have a little extra center, oh, nothing.
Okay, unless you guys have any other questions?
One question, Neil.
Oh.
Yes, he did, he, and we, and we did this week. Yep.
Uh, you did the ramps into the bathroom and ramp up on some.
Snack shack, yep.
Thank you, that's awesome.
We talked about it and we, what was it, Thursday or Friday now, right?
Yeah, we ended up doing it Tuesday, that was a lot of black tie.
Good, alright, yep, so they'll be happy.
They'll be happy, that's.
Grand, it's snack shack.
Alright. Looking for a motion to approve the Highway Department report?
We'll make that motion.
Either, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Close their abstentions, carries, thank you, Neil. Um, Sewer Department report, is there anything you guys want to ask about or address?
No.
Uh.
Good ones for revenue. There's good money and.
Good ones for revenue.
Yep.
Taking on the sewer.
Yep, yep, alright, uh, looking for a motion to, uh, accept the Sewer Department report?
Neil has a question.
Oh, Neil, I'm sorry.
Can we somehow put it in the paper, try to have this little people stopped up and breach some, uh, sewer line? Kenny and Keith got called out on Sunday night?
Sunday night.
Where?
I thought it was down at the center.
Down in the second ward, yeah, I saw that.
And, uh, they had, he, Kenny said it was like four foot long and it's probably eight, ten inches in diameter of just grease.
Grease.
And it's back up, making everything else back up in people's basements, so.
Any chance, um, he got pictures of anything?
I don't know, we took pictures, but not, but.
I mean, if you're staring at four feet of grease, you're probably not thinking, I want a picture of this. But I don't think people understand what things you should not put down your kitchen sink.
So, just out of curiosity, is that like a buildup over time or is that like?
It will be a buildup over time.
You know, usually happens down there once a year.
Mm-hmm.
Just in that, it's gotta be within between Fifth Street and Fourth Street.
And what happens is.
You know, it just fills up in cakes and cakes and cakes and.
Yeah, the other bad scenario, which we've seen before, is when the lines get to some of those, um, pumps, the pumps get so gone. The pumps get so gobbled up that they'll actually burn out and we'll have to replace the motors. Which becomes like a multi-thousand dollar thing. I feel like that happened on a Fourth of July one time where Kenny spent his Fourth of July knee deep in stuff.
So, maybe that's something, I hate to even, hate to bring this up, is this something we can put in the water bills?
Yeah, we could certainly do that.
A note like that, that, you know, please don't.
Yeah.
I haven't looked at it, but I'm sure it's in the sewer use law and a reminder that under the village's sewer use law, following is prohibited.
You know, I mean, it's, I mean.
I also think like a forty-five to six, sixty-second, simple video will make a lot of impact and just educate people, cause a lot of people don't know.
Look at the website, yeah.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah.
I think that's more than putting in the water bill.
Nobody looks at it, you're right, you're probably right.
Maybe I'll, uh, see if there's any creative high school students who want to make a video for us. As he looks over the high school students in attendance, alright. Alright, we did, we did do the motion, right?
I had Mag, I need a second.
Second.
We got, okay, all in favor of, uh, accepting the sewer report?
Aye.
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 Pose their abstentions? Carries and Water Department report? I have a couple things to add to this, um, and this will tie in with something I, I forgot to put on the agenda, but. Um, I spoke with Jim and Josh today. Um, we had been spending a few months looking at. The Rensselaar Street pump station property next door on Ashley Drive, um, we as a board.
You mean Rogers Street, Rogers Avenue.
What's that?
You mean Rogers Avenue.
What did I say?
Rensselaar.
Rensselaar, that's the other, that's the other pump station.
You were close, you were close.
Oh my gosh. Uh, yeah, that one, um, Rogers Avenue at the top, and, uh, we had looked at the property next door, which was for sale. And the board had made a motion to, uh, to have someone come out and do an appraisal, so we can have further discussions. We did get the appraisal done, I'm assuming it's fine to share publicly what the appraisal would be, um, and also, I, can I send the appraisal? To the realtor who, um, is representing the person owning the property? I would assume that's a normal thing to do, right?
Absolutely.
Okay, so the appraisal came back at, uh, fifteen thousand dollars, which was pretty close to what the assessed value we were kinda guessing. And we were guessing somewhere in the ten to twenty ballpark. Um. The idea had been, we know that the Rogers Avenue tank has been in need of repairs and in fact, uh, we just got a letter. Uh, that I have on your desk, we got it forwarded out, um, about that. Um, we had been looking at the possibility of buying the property next door, which would give us more options when we go to replace it. Also, we have not had a lot of funds, especially when it came to water funds, so we've kind of been putting it off. Um, but I had a, a very good and frank conversation with Jim and Josh and their basic point was. We know this is a priority, but holy cow, is a new vehicle more important. And if, if the villa, if, they're basically, they're saying if we're looking to spend fifteen thousand dollars on the property. They would rather see it go to the imminent need of a vehicle. Um, I told them, I know we had talked about this before and I said, um. We're concerned with a lot of financial things coming up as we've already discussed, um, if there is a way they could find a way to, in their normal budget, free up. Maybe ten or fifteen thousand dollars, even five thousand, that combined with maybe a little bit of ARPA funds could be a good investments. Um, but it's the same thing, we're all in support of that, just like we are with the ta, uh, with the, um, evidence system, but we're also. Very concerned about the upcoming budget season, so I'm hoping that the next meeting, we can also address that, in the meantime, I'm hoping that they can find some. Used and or new vehicles that would work, likely a used vehicle, and Neil, you'll probably know this, but. A used vehicle for maybe twenty thousand dollars is probably only gonna get us about four or five years and a hundred thousand miles on it. A new one probably would be like forty, fifty, maybe sixty thousand? So.
No, easy.
Oh, yeah.
Easy, so I asked them to start looking and finding quotes and getting them to us, Dan, I feel like you had also done a little bit of looking at some point?
It's just, yeah, like Upstate Auto Sales, you know, they've got. They've got the slide utility vehicles, they're the place to go, you can't, right now, it's very difficult. Well, I think Neil, you mentioned like two years to get a, get a painter or something, right? But it's, yeah, it's, it's no different, I mean, I, I'm in the ambulance union business, they, they can't get, I mean, they're essentially buying the same thing, like they're buying. You want a utility vehicle, they're buying the same chassis, they're just putting a thing with a structure effect, you can't get them right now, you just.
Yeah.
They're asking that companies trying to buy eight ten, ten trucks and they're, they're too, I don't know. They're a few rations. Well, new ones are re-chassis jobs, you know, some of the more expensive vehicles, the big box, once you see those are big chassis jobs. You just, they're very, very difficult to get right now, it's not, it's, and sometimes it's not even a question of how much you're willing to spend, it's supposed for. You get anything for any amount of money, but, uh, it's just a question of ability. So, I, when I stop by Upstate Auto Sales, he ju, he just told me I got no, I got nothing to sell to you, now that was however many months ago, I can stop by this again.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, he said, you know, stuff pops up, I went to my, my colleague, calling the cell phone.
Right.
But along those lines, I, in, in my opinion, I, I think we should move ahead with purchasing the property as a priority because. You know, vehicles come, vehicles go, if we lose out on that property, and I realize a homeowner, whoever owns it, isn't like playing a marketing, that sliver of land, but. They have a change of heart, what have you, and we don't have access to that, we're forever now limited to what parcel that we're on and our options are limited. Interestingly with it, that's a one, one-shot deal, if you, if you don't get it, you can't just go out and get a different one, you gotta get that particular parcel of land and, uh. If we miss that opportunity, um, it becomes true now in perpetuity, you know, the vehicle is the vehicle.
If we wanted to move forward with the purchase, what would it, would it basically be like, in a sense, they would give me the, uh, the, um. Authority to negotiate a price with them, or would we be locked into what the appraisal came back at?
Uh, is this, the reason you had the appraisal is, remember, you should be paying fair market value, considering you negotiate a price.
Mm-hmm.
But you're dealing with public funds, you certainly don't wanna go well above what it's market value, that opens you up to a claim of.
Right.
Taxpayer challenge for waste of public funds, so it should be in line with approximately what the fair market's appraisal value.
Okay.
Yep.
So.
But it can be less than, I mean, they.
Oh, certainly, so if the homeowner says, take it for ten. That, that's correct, you can certainly negotiate best price, but it, it should be a lot more than that.
It's a lot more than a third of an acre.
It is, a third, yeah, it's just a third of an acre, but.
A third of an acre, that's a lot of money. But, but the, the particular land is critical for our future.
It's a third of an acre.
So, I've, I've had some. I've had conversations with Josh and Jim, that tank up there gives pressure to all, to water pressure to all the properties up there. There's theory that we could make it okay if we had to take the tank offline for an amount of time. Which would mean that we would actually have months to take down the existing, put up a new one in the actual spot, instead of having to have to buy a, uh, separate land. The main issue would not be water pressure up there, it would be if there was an emergency, such as a fire. And we wanted to plug a hydrant in and there wasn't the tank there, well, then it's gonna be a, a, a significant change to. Water capacity and pressure when the, it's the same thing that when we did the, um, the Snow Street Grant like five years ago. When we got a new line put in there, it increased the pressure up there significantly and made a huge difference. Um, I wanna talk again with, um, our, uh, environmental engineer, uh, Robert Flores from Delaware Engineering. Um, to see, cause in the past, we had looked at replacing that, but those were huge costs, so we went for grants multiple times and haven't gotten them. It's possible that we can go for it again, especially because there are many more grants on the horizon right now with some of the federal and state laws that have just changed, including. Um, the initiative that passed yesterday, which freed up a whole bunch of state funds for environmental purposes and. Things they were specific about or things that we have used funds for, so. Um, but I'd like to talk again with, um, Robert Flores and talk through some of the possible designs for a new. Um, location up there, Jim thought there may be a lower sitting one, same capacity, wider, wouldn't stick up nearly as high as that one we had looked at, that was like twenty, twenty-five feet.
That's the issue, right.
So, I'd like to circle back with Flores and maybe we can be in a position to make a decision in December. Maybe, uh, if you guys, if it sounds like you guys want, I can start talking to them and negotiating, um, what we think would be a fair price.
The other question I would have is, for applying for a grant, um, does it, the fact that we acquired the property or in the process of acquiring the property. Help with the grant application, does it show initiative, does it show some type of, uh, you know, forward thinking or what?
They have already put together a lot of stuff for when grants are ready, specific to water and sewer needs replacement throughout the village, including this, so we're ready to go when that happens. It's a matter of, does the engineer think that if we have a property next door, it's gonna save us money to have that, install the thing while the other one's still there and then quickly swap the lines? That, I don't know, that's why I wanna ask, um, the engineer about that. Yeah, I feel, I feel like that's the key point.
The other reason I ask is because of this standard of forward thinking. That was a lot of the discussion, what are, what are you doing preemptively, what are you, you know. They wanna see that there's, it's not just throwing something at it, but there's an issue going on behind the scenes to do this stuff.
Yeah, I think with, um, if we go for any more grants, I think the one thing that we're gonna be in a better position to do is communicate. How deep the need is for this, not just the physical need for the structure, but for the financial assistance, um, because of all the various debt we're facing, so. Okay, that was long about the Water Department, any other questions about the report, sorry? Uh, looking for a motion to approve the Water Department reports?
Megan?
Alright, um, all in favor?
Aye.
Pose their abstentions? Alright, carries, uh, minutes, we have our October eleventh, uh, regular meeting minutes that, uh, was sent out a while back. Unless you have any changes to suggest, I'm looking for a motion to approve those minutes. Thank you, Megan, thank you, Mr. Bob Decker. Uh, further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Pose their abstentions? Carries, we had, um, two emergency meetings, um, emergency simply being, if we had more than what, Andy, forty-eight hours, it would be a special meeting, we could notice it. But we didn't have that much time, so it's called an emergency meeting, doesn't necessitate an emergency, but. Uh, just in terms of time purposes, we had an emergency meeting on October twenty-eighth, you guys have those minutes? Um, unless there's a request for a change, we're looking for a motion to approve those minutes.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you, further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Pose their abstentions? Carrie's good, and a few days later, we just missed each other so much, we had one more on November first, uh, looking for a motion for those minutes.
Aye.
Alright, Dan in second, Bobby, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Um, pose their abstentions? Carries, great, trustee committee reports, we'll start with, uh, Mr. Deck at the end and just work our way through, anything you wanna report?
One thing I have is on the way to the, on the committee, but. Couple residents brought up the idea to have some other towns railroads have quiet time when it comes to the crossings. I looked it up best I can, just started in the, it is FRA legal. I'm wondering if that's something we wanna look into, um, you know, like, so they're not, we have four crossings right around. I live on the tracks, you know, and so they buy FRA rule, they have to, wah, wah, three times, I think. So, I think it's enchanted, they already have, I, I don't even, I haven't looked into what signs and what you do, but it's like quiet time. As long as you have crosses with lights and sound and bells, this would be legal under FRA rules. So, I'm wondering if I should look into that anymore, I, I've had a lot of discussion about that.
So, it would, you would still hear the train, you'd still hear the signals, you just wouldn't have the horns?
Right, he wouldn't, the engineer wouldn't blow at the crossings, and during certain hours, now, I'm not defensive about it, but it wouldn't, I've had a lot of residents say that. Just the conversation that comes up. It can be legal FRA-wise, I don't know how I feel, you know?
I don't live next to the track, but Bobby, I'm a board leader, I, I, you know, it wakes me up and I'm about high street.
Yeah, I mean.
And there's one engineer, I don't.
One guy.
I mean, my house shits.
It's true, there's one guy.
Hell, I'm.
Am I right or wrong? One guy's.
No, you're right, you're right.
And one guy just lays.
It's a little warehouse shit, right?
You, you think the football team just won the national championship? You know, listen, I, 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 I mean, if, if there's a middle ground on this thing, I think one series of horns.
Right, I mean, I agree with them.
Is doing, add a new series for every single crossing through the village.
You want me to look into it, I don't know.
I, I would like you to look into it, um, and I think obviously if we want to look into enforcing something like that, we would definitely need to. Legally look at if it would put the village in any liability, we certainly don't want that.
We don't have enough fights to fight.
I don't think there's a good fight.
Oh, nothing with the train, it's easy.
From the railroad, you know, Bobby.
Nothing.
No.
They, nothing, you're not, that's like an act of congress.
I say, if it's something.
FRA acts pretty quick, it's not like, oh, Guilford.
If somebody else has done this, if another municipality has done with it, I'm game to see how it works, so.
It's a couple of, it's a couple of.
I, I like it, thank you, anything else?
You've seen my cousin Billy a lot times, I'm sure. Do you remember four in the morning when the train comes through?
Oh, boy.
And it blasts him out of bed, that's his play.
Just as an aside, Andy and I, I'm even further from the train than he is. On certain nights when the temperature and humidity is just right, it sounds like it's in the next room, it is unbelievable.
And I'm even further.
Yeah, yeah.
And it's one guy, I swear, cause one of them is worse, cause I think he's trying to be with somebody here.
And there is one, I, I think he just sits on it the whole way, anyway, I'm sorry.
He's really mad at people.
We digress.
Rock, paper, scissors, the rules, there's four of them, with their.
There are.
Dan?
Dan, what do you have, anything?
I got nothing for you, other than I agree with Bobby.
Alright, Deb.
Bobby and I'd be the train committee, I was like.
Bobby, Bobby, you, you, you need to get back to work, you had one free time.
He wants to make this happen.
Deb, anything for us?
Um, just, I've been working, kind of on my zoning stuff, just plowing some, do some paperwork and things that I have, and, um.
Yep.
Um, we still need to get our guys trained, our guys and gals trained, and, um, I just talked to Andy earlier tonight, but we're gonna figure out if, um. I think if I read what I would read, if, if what I was reading, I read correctly, um, see, I hurt my hand, so now my brain doesn't work. So, um, that we can, we can pass as a board that, um, people can get certified in online courses, they don't have to go to an in-person course. That could be a really good thing to make things much better.
And if we wanted to, I'm sorry, so you keep going.
I just wanted, I just, I mean, we could also vote that they don't have to have any training, but I think that's, I think it's better if I do have training.
Andy, if we wanted to make a policy that specifically required training. For, you know, I don't know, a couple hours a year or every couple years, would that be something we would do in our organizational meeting, or that just be like a standard policy, how do we do that?
It's already required under state law.
Well, yeah, it's required by state.
If we wanted to go further than what the state requires?
Well, state requires four hours of training a year.
Okay.
I think they require most of it, if not all of it, to be in person.
Do we need, so.
It would be easier for everybody to, I mean, you have no trouble getting people for their own.
We don't have trouble getting people to be on the.
I know, we want to know what they're doing, that's important.
Do we have? If we allowed it to be online courses where we have to do some policy or?
Well, that's what Deb and I look at.
Great.
I don't know the answer to that, people will look at that.
That's great. Thank you.
And that's a great idea.
It's a great idea and I'm glad you're taking this on, really.
I think it's important, I think when we, when we start looking at things like the grants that we've been looking at and stuff, I think we have our zoning all above board and.
Yep.
Training and everything, it's all what we do.
Yep, thank you.
Um, I think it's also important for the zoning people and the plants, well, especially the zoning board, um, because the way it works is, it's actually the zoning board of appeals, is what it's called, and. Um, nothing should even go to the, the zoning board unless it's gone through Mark first, so, with, the way it's supposed to work is somebody asks Mark for a permit or whatever, and. He looks at the law and then, and he's trained, he's done all this training, and, um. He looks at the law and if he says, no, you can't do this according to the law, then, um, then it can be appealed to the, um, zoning board of appeals, at which point they're gonna get stare on this and whatever. Um, but they also have to stick with the law, so that's why it's important for them to be. Okay, because it can't just be, you know, I like Joey and, you know, we shouldn't do that, or, yeah, I think, no, it shouldn't, I just.
I agree.
It's not the way it should work, so, anyway, I think, just think we should do it, whatever.
Thank you.
So, um, and the other thing is, I don't know, Neil, Bobby might have already told you, but one of the benches in front of the library. Um, the, the, I've been told, I didn't even notice myself, but the, um, cement pad is shifting or something, it's the gray and white one? Um, the the, I've been told, I didn't even notice myself, but the um cement pad is shifting or something, it's the gray and white one? Not the colored one?
That pad was put in by the state, so.
For the bench? So we have to go to the state?
All they did was say, we could just swap out the benches.
Okay, so we have to contact the state?
They will do it.
Yeah, I know they want to, but.
But you will, right?
We'll be here five.
Yeah.
Just dig it out, jack it up, throw something.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know, maybe it's fine, it's just a little crooked, what do I know, what, I have to say, um Ken's not here, I should save it for next time, but. Somebody came into my shop last week, he was here visiting from Texas, and he came into my shop and he said, is that bench yours? I was after sale, and I said, no, he said, well, I wanna buy one, where can I get it, it's really cool and it's very comfortable.
Should've asked him how much it is.
He should've asked Neil, he probably could've gotten three right that day.
I got a few extras out there.
Be a good income for the village there.
For a small price.
Straight, we'll trade it for a a water department vehicle, there you go, there you go.
A water truck. Utility vehicle.
Alright, Deb, anything else?
No, that's it.
Thank you, Megan? Megan did all of her her stuff on email and got all the stuff for the police lined up, so thank you, all the reminders, super helpful, Bobby?
The only thing I had, I just wanted to just let everybody know that um Real Term Energy did complete the GIS audit, um and we have.
This is the uh the the streetlights.
LED lights, yes, and um I emailed her right before I came, and I have, I didn't hear back, um. Cause there's some discrepancies uh in what National Grid had versus what Real Term did with the audit. There's like forty, I believe there's forty-seven more poles than what we had in inventory, but I believe those might be the decker of that are ours, I I don't know that for sure. But Neil, do you know?
We've we've got thirty.
And I'm surely counting the ones on the bridge, so, yeah, so I gotta, just gotta get with them, and there's, there's. Seven poles that they couldn't find.
Really?
They gave me, there's a whole report, I mean, it's like the Declaration of Independence, it's uh. So uh I'll I'll forward it on to you, Neil, and everybody else, just so you have it, but, so it's in process, and you know, we just, they. We have to respond back to the audit, I have to, a it's a survey, and and I emailed her, I said, I'm not quite sure what I'm supposed to respond back here, so. I need some guidance, because it's new to me, so.
I'm I'm glad you brought that up, cause that reminded me of one more thing, and Neil, you wanna know about this too, we had talked about a year or two ago, um. A high school student had come to me and asked about the potential of using her. I forget what it is for uh Girl Scouts, it's, is it the gold, the gold?
Gold award.
The whatever that project is they have to do at the end. Yeah, um and she had wanted to get the veteran banners on the poles. Covid happened, so we kinda put it on hold, she is about to finish the last step before she starts this project. So she has reached out to me, it's uh Emily Young, uh and her mother would like to set up a time, we're trying to find a time in the next couple weeks. To sit down and start discussing this, um it would be similar to the way a lot of the municipalities locally have started to honor their local veterans and put them up on post, so. That is coming, Neil, um it likely will be financed through family donations to 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 make that happen, but I know it will tie into. Poles, so it's just another thing to have on the radar as we move on that.
Okay.
Um and I know that the American Legion will will likely be involved, I'm not sure which contact will be from the American Legion. And I know of a couple other people such as Gail Smith who have done a lot for our local veterans, who would be good resources to make sure we get that out there, so.
And Historical Society, everyone.
Yup, yup, Joyce and Samantha, so we have started, we're 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 sort of getting things in line to start down that road officially. And of course, she's a senior this year, so it's something that would be, she wants to have completed before the uh school year ends. So I think that will be a fantastic thing to uh have ready to go in the the spring uh or early summer, so. We'll have it right by January twentieth, so Neil could, no, I'm just kidding, alright, um any, anything else? Alright, um, yeah.
All right, we're all set for Christmas and pointing the, I mean, you, pointing Godwin's up and all that stuff. And who's surprising is doing the gazebo?
That's what I understand, yes.
Okay, okay, just wanna make sure we're all basically covered.
Alright, um.
Are you wearing a Santa outfit when you do this?
The next item is ARPA discussions, um each meeting, I haven't updated one of these, um I just kinda put it all together into one thing. So we can just have the list and see it, um three hundred forty-three thousand was the ARPA initial funding over two payments. Uh this is what I'm pretty sure we have left, I just wanna make sure I haven't missed anything, uh these are the things we have done thus far, the standard allowance with goal of studying water budget. Uh we did the village office computer network upgrades, gazebo improvements, ten thousand in Huzik Rising, thirty-seven fifty to Grandma Moses' mirror restoration, which is done and looks fantastic, by the way.
And he says it'll last about ten years.
That is, that is terrific.
And then the wall needs to be fixed.
It's really, what's that?
It says it'll last about ten years and then the wall, it's.
The brick wall?
Yeah.
Okay, really, okay, um we did ten thousand to the youth center, ten thousand to the Huzik Rescue Squad. Uh ten thousand to Civic here, and I think the twenty-seven forty-one which you just gave me, uh for the Jose de Cress statue restoration, that's all we've done at this point, correct?
That might actually not be finished until the spring, depending on the weather.
Okay, but we've, we've, yeah, okay, so that leaves us with a hundred and fifty-eight-two-nine-eight. Um, and I know that there's a couple things that will, a a few of us are chomping at the bit to do, and Bobby and I are pleading with you to give us one more meeting to get some financial stuff figured out, so we can make those decisions. Uh but I wanna make sure everyone had that information, so, right. Alright, uh on to new business, uh we have already done all of the Huzik PD items. Uh so I'm gonna go on to the Huzik River Greenway Trail, this is the Northern Trail, um. We have a a letter from Barton and Le Judas, they uh went and pursued quotes for a few items, let me bring the. Uh letter back up here on the screen, bear with me. Um, there are three items that we're looking to do as part of this grant, um and I have a a quick sheet, I'll show you, which shows all the quotes, but basically, it's a breakdown of prices. That they did for the three items, the kiosk, the bike rack, and the bike repair station. Uh their recommendations are for the bike repair station to go with Darrow, a Playcore company. Uh their quote for the bike repair station was twenty-two eighty-nine fifty-nine, this was slightly more expensive than the quote from Bellson, but the product or manufacturer are familiar to us and use on many local trails in addition. The unit is in stock and will ship immediately, um meeting the religious goal of installation this fall, um the letter template is attached. Um I'll show you what the quotes were in just a minute, but the, so the bike repair station is point one, the second one is the bike rack, and their recommendation is again to go with Darrow. Which ended up being the lowest price, and then the third thing is a kiosk, um their recommendation is to go with the Timber Homes Classic Kiosk Proposal. Which was four thousand four hundred and forty-five.
What's the kiosk?
Neil, you wanna speak to that while I get the other file up? Nope, not that one.
Try like this one down here, we got this on the Greenway.
Information maps have done it.
A map of the Greenway.
So I asked for some follow-up information, these were the three quotes they got for the bike repair station, uh where's my mouse, come on mouse. So their recommendation was the Darrow one, which is, which was not the least expensive. But they thought it was the 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 best one, it would be here at the right time. We got two quotes only for the bike rack, and they were again recommended Darrow, which was the lowest one, and then the trail kiosks, this one was forty-four hundred, the others were fourteen thousand and. Twenty to thirty thousand depending on.
It's something different.
Yeah.
Was one made of gold plating or something?
Maybe the other ones are air air co- helicopter lifted and dropped, I don't know.
Maybe one of them includes the um. Changing of the sewer plant road.
Maybe, probably not, probably not.
That's a pretty, pretty wide range estimate, isn't it?
Yeah.
This is what I'm thinking, I could build it in my garage in an afternoon.
Yeah, so.
I'll do it for thirty thousand.
I did check, um and asked to make sure that these prices, these purchases would fit within the grant funds and we would still have enough. They felt confident with that, I forwarded the email to Denise, and Denise took a quick look and said, yeah, that makes sense, everything has been. Pretty much straight on the straight and narrow with this grant, so there's no concerns about if we go over budget or not, that, this is all grant money, they just need our formal approval to move forward with these. So any questions on this? Um, I'll leave this up for just a moment, I broke these up into separate motions for each item, Andy, I assume that's okay? Um so I'm looking for a motion to approve the bike repair station purchase for Darrow uh company at twenty-two eighty-nine fifty-nine. Just noting that it was slightly more expensive than the lowest quote, but it was their recommendation and it will be able to be here on time to meet our fall goal.
So what does this bike repair station uh contain?
Neil?
All I can tell you is that we bolted to the concrete, we put it in the ground, and people can set their bikes up on there and they can work on it.
To fix the tire.
This was part of the. This was part of the 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 grant proposal?
It's part of the grant, yeah.
This has been part of the grant and the grant planning proposal, all stuff that was done before I was uh, before I hopped on.
Every time you have a flat tire, it's gonna be there.
I I just just wanted to not understand, that's.
And I know that uh Paula Camperman, who's also been involved with the Greenway a lot, was, has been involved in this, and she got the email, and and Ted um from. Formerly from B and L, who retired, has also been on the on the loop on this, and they're all good with this, as far as I know, I haven't heard anything yet.
I'll make a motion for the bike repair station.
To approve the purchase?
Yes.
Need a second? Alright, and again, yeah?
Rory, if you can note that on this particular one, the motion that the board finds it approved, that this is the lowest responsible bid and meeting the specifications and at the recommendation of your engineer.
Excuse me, yeah.
And you say it's the, it was the lowest? It was not the lowest, it was lowest responsible, okay.
It's this lowest responsible.
Okay.
And meeting the specifications and upon the recommendation of your engineer.
Yup, okay, so we have a motion from Bobby, do we have a second? Alright, second one, Deb, further discussion, all in favor? Aye, opposed?
Opposed.
And abstentions, alright, carries, uh the second one is uh for a motion to approve the purchase of the bike rack from Darrow. Uh at one at nineteen ninety-three fourteen as recommended and the lowest bid uh from B and L. Need a motion for the bike rack purchase, Deb, need a second?
I can second.
Objection, yeah.
Alright, Megan?
It's already spent.
Right.
Yeah, it's all grant, yeah.
It's all free.
All, all, yeah.
There's better ways, it's like two thousand dollars.
Yeah, but we don't have any control.
But it's it's grant.
It's grant money, we don't have.
It's it's grant money, specific, oh, what am I doing? But it would have to fall. It would have, well, we're 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 talking about the bike rack now.
Alright, bike rack fine, maybe, but.
But.
Yeah, okay, doesn't matter.
Sounds like Bobby Decker wants to get involved in the next Greenway grant planning, I see what's going on here.
Just involved in voting.
No, it's fine.
I told him if he gets this thing done. If you get the train thing done, they will put a bronze statue of him down.
They will, they definitely will.
Completely with candles burning around.
Buddy, they're already gonna put a bronze.
Alright, alright, we are so far off task. Alright, we have a motion for the bike rack, and a second further discussion, all in favor on the bike rack?
Aye. Aye.
Oppose or abstentions? Carries, and the final one is the purchase of the kiosk as recommended by B and L for Timber Homes Classic Kiosk. For forty-four, forty-five dollars uh to be placed down there.
No, I wanna spend twenty thousand dollars.
I disagree, I need a motion and a second.
Motion.
Deb will be the second, um further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose or abstentions? Alright, carries.
Question, point of information?
Yeah.
Neil, is sewer plant ward, is that what road? I don't even know, sewer plant road, is that a village road or is that a town road?
Town road. Not only is it a town road, but there's multiple.
But we maintain it.
Easements on it.
Who has to change it?
Shared easements.
Do we need? I hate to do that, though. Hey, where do you get on the beautiful Greenway to walk on it, I'll just go down to plant road.
Yeah.
You know what, yeah, but it it takes, that sewer plant road takes in twelve to fifteen thousand dollars a month, we'll call sewer sewer plant road. I want the guys doing the sewer trucks, even knowing where they're going.
Okay.
You can assign one, you need formally, no, no.
We have a resolution from Urswama.
Oh, Urswama.
Um, this is a a resolution that we do every year that simply extends the Urswama Service Agreement one year, this is not related to. The bids we do for county waste and any, it's just, just the one-year service agreement, so.
What do they do for us?
You, thank you, you took the words out of my mouth.
You're welcome.
What do they do for us?
Well, one of the things they do is um organize and provide multiple municipalities to gather in bids for things like county waste, so when you're going for something like that. They're doing the legwork, they represent multiple municipalities, so in theory, maybe they'll get a lower bid.
They do a hazmat day once a year in one place in a county, which was in Castleton or something like.
No, no, it's.
It 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 drove it, right, yeah, I understand that.
One day a year.
And what's it cost us?
It goes from place to place to place, so we can ask them to do one year when.
I'm not sure off the top of my head, if someone wants to dive into the full file of Urswama, I can even give you the legal case where the village.
Too busy cutting.
Tried to get out of it and lost.
Coming out and got us in and wouldn't let us out, no, that's okay.
They do a nice calendar.
We did.
They do a nice calendar, that's right, they're very fun to work with.
Neil, did they do anything with the transfer station?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, but we pay separately for that, right? It's for the garbage, but all the stuff they take out of the transfer station, cause the bills are in there.
Garbage is taken out by county waste, which is a different contract.
No, 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 I heard about the garbage at the transfer station.
Urswama, so they don't have anything to do with the transfer station?
Urswama controls the transfer.
Yeah.
But we've got county waste garbage dumpsters up there, which is two different haulers. We've got haulers that county waste takes the garbage, and we've got some haulers, I believe in the south, is Paul for Urswama now? They're taking a C and D out of there, and they're co-mortaled.
Uh that is not the resolution. So I have a resolution authorizing the extension of the service agreement with Urswama, um whereas Urswama manages the M S W programs, recycling programs. Hazardous waste programs and education programs, and whereas Urswama service agreements are all coming to an end in the next few months, it's stagger dates for their member communities. And the Eastern Rensselaer County Urswama Board of Directors has determined that due to large projects currently in progress, that it would be in the best interest. And benefit of the members, member municipalities to extend the service agreements one year to further pursue these uh projects. And whereas Urswama service agreements would remain unchanged to the current agreements, whereas it's necessary that a contract by between Urswama. Um in the village of Huzik Falls be executed, now therefore be resolved by the members of the village of Huzik Falls to enter, uh extend the Urswama service agreement. One year from the end of the current contract, which I don't remember what the dates, I don't have the dates off me.
Um, it's like, it's coming up December first.
It's coming up soon, yeah.
December first, I think.
So.
What's it cost?
Uh I don't know off the top of my head, uh I do know that we're not really in a good position to rock the boat on anything like this until. We all have a working understanding of all the stuff that Neil just talked about with the transfer station. Which I'm great glad to, that Megan just volunteered to figure out, I'm just kidding. But, so yeah, that's uh, that'll be my recommendation. So I need someone to offer and second the resolution?
Offer.
Thank you, Deb, do we have a second for the resolution, thank you, Megan, I could, I could feel the tension in everyone's voice, um. Should I do a roll call though for this, Andy, does it matter, it doesn't say?
No.
Okay, so just simple motion will be fine, all in favor, aye, aye, opposed? One, abstentions? Alright, it passes for another year with lots of. It passes for another year with lots of, of other facial motions, okay? Um, almost there, almost at the end, local law number three. Um, board as a reminder, we talked about uh the possibility of modifying the law to include refuse. So based on that, I think it's our recommendation to not move forward with introductory local law number three. Go back and add some things to it.
I'll add some to it, yeah.
Absolutely.
Does that everybody agree with that?
I make a motion to table it.
Alright, uh, need a.
Do we have to, once, once we have that, do we have to reintroduce it and wait another month?
Yes, yeah, once you modify our, our, we have to wait another month, yep.
Yeah. Yep. Alright, so we have a motion to table it from Bobby, I need a second.
Second.
Thank you, other Bobby, uh, further discussion? All in favor of tabling?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed or abstentions? Alright, carries. Uh, reluctantly tabled, but the right thing and thank you guys for all of your feedback and all the work that's been put into that.
No, no, it's, it's a great idea, I'm not opposed to it at all, I just wanted.
What's that? Ha ha, I see what you did there.
We just wanna get the verbiage right, that's.
I, I think that humor is garbage, ha ha, alright.
I mean, let's go to bed.
So, Andy, knowing that we've tabled that, does this local law number four become local law number three?
Uh, yes.
Okay. So, I'm going to rock everyone's world here. You guys ready down there? Those are, those are my drummers in the band over there. There you go. Uh, what we were calling introductory local law will now become introductory local law number three.
No, it's still introductory local law four.
But it will become local law number three, okay.
Local law four.
So, um, does the board want to move forward with local law number four, introductory local law number four?
Yes.
Okay, we have a resolution for that, thank you, Andy. I am not looking at the right screen, there we go. Okay, um, Andy, are, shh. Is there anything I would need to change to call this local law number three?
Yeah, so it's down in the body under number two.
Yes.
Introductory local law four, yes, hereby adopted as local law number three.
So can you make note that that's gonna be changed? Alright. Okay, so, I'm just gonna briefly walk through the where I statements on this resolution adopting local law. Introductory local law number four of twenty twenty-two, the village of Huzik Falls. Whereas the local law uh was introduced in October eleventh. Um, where it places restrictions on the discharge of firearms and crossbows in the village of Huzik Falls. November ninth, we had our public hearing, uh, closed the public hearing as well. Um, whereas upon review of the environmental assessment form and the few considerations potential significant adverse environmental impacts of action. Where is determined negative declaration under seeker. Um, now therefore be resolved by the Board of Trustees of the village of Huzik Falls in regular session due to convenience follows one. And negative declaration is hereby adopted pursuant to the State Environmental Quality Review Act with respect to introdo- local law number four, twenty twenty-two. And number two, introductory local law number four, twenty twenty-two, the village of Huzik Falls being hereby adopted as local law number three of twenty twenty-two of the village of Huzik Falls. Uh, number three.
That, that'll be changed.
That will also be changed, local law number three of twenty twenty-two, the village of Huzik Falls. Shall be filed in the office of the New York State Department of State in compliance with all applicable legal requirements and the village clerk is hereby directed to. Call such filings to be completed. I need someone to offer the resolution? Thank you, Megan, and second?
Second.
Um, it was like three of you volunteered.
Oh, okay, okay.
Dan was first, so we'll give it to Dan.
Yeah, that's right.
Uh, further discussion on this? Alright, carry none, um, roll call vote please.
Trustee Shetty.
Yay.
Trustee O'Malley Abson, trustee Alter. Yes. Trustee Decker.
Yes.
Trustee Walry. Yes. Deputy Mayor Ryan.
Yes.
And Mayor Allen.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
High school students just got to see a local law pass, exciting. No more crossbows to discharge the village, great. Alright, um, and also just as a moment. Looking at that Urswama resolution and your beautifully crafted resolution, oh my gosh. It's a thing I noticed now. Your resolutions are amazing and other resolutions make me wanna weep. I'll get over it, you saw it, right? There was like typo, anyway, I'm gonna get on high horse here.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So you guys.
Um, we already did our motion to re levy unpaid tax.
We did.
I'm sorry, did you have, did you have a?
Nope, you're good, we got one more resolution.
Okay. Okay, we have one more resolution, uh, this resolution is actually related to the closeout of the Woods Brook Grant. That we did with the town of Huzik. Uh, so let me bring up this final resolution. Um, this is a resolution adopting section five oh four grievance procedure for disability nondiscrimination. Andy, do you wanna summarize this?
Well, this, this came through, it is a requirement under the grants agreement, and this was forwarded over by B and L. Uh, it will set up a formal grievance procedure, uh, with Marie accepting complaints if filed. It just is a procedural issue if any issue came up during the. Uh, implementation with use of the grant funds.
Mm-hmm.
Not aware of anything.
Right.
Had been, but as a check off on the grant requirement, this needed to be in place, so this just formally adopts the grievance procedure.
So is this if we, our program, we put aside, walk in on the proper ADA requirements, if somebody wants to file a formal grievance?
Uh, I think that would be included.
This one is specific to the, um, the two improvements we did for the Woods Brook outside the village and the town.
That's correct.
Johnson Hill and the one by the golf course.
Yeah, so if there's any complaints regarding uh discrimination for disability claims. This would set the procedure for that one.
Welcome to New York State.
Glad we took care of that.
Well, we haven't yet, so everyone's on the edge of their seat.
Close out the greatest agreement.
It's one of our forty requirements to close out the grant, so.
Yeah, alright, so, uh, Andy has reviewed it, thank you, Andy. Now therefore be resolved by the Board of Trustees of the village of Huzik Falls in regular session due to convenience follows one. The Board of Trustees of the village of Huzik Falls hereby adopts the grievance procedure. With respect to complaints alleging any action prohibited by the Department of Housing and Urban Development's implementation of section five oh four of the Rehabilitation Act of nineteen seventy-three as amended. As set forth in the attached document titled section five oh four grievance procedure for disability nondiscrimination.
Mouthful.
Need someone to offer that?
I'm.
I knew you would.
Very, very.
Dan is very.
That's actually we've offered.
Bobby Decker will second it?
Thank you, Bobby.
Dan, is there anything else you wanna discuss with us?
Does that any, can we use it to greet the horns on the train?
No, we cannot. Alright, roll call vote please.
I don't know if I can talk. Trustee Shetty.
Yay.
Trustee O'Malley Abson, trustee Alter.
Yep.
Trustee Decker.
Yep.
Trustee Walry. Yes. Mayor Allen.
Yes.
And Deputy Mayor Ryan.
Yes.
Just as an aside, coming back from Covid, if I had tried to read that a month ago, oh, it would have been gibberish and it would have had multiple languages and I would have been speaking tongues. Oh my gosh, okay, um, that is all I have on the agenda, um, do you guys have anything else you wanna bring up for the good of the board? Hearing none, I'm looking for a motion to enter executive session to discuss personal matters and to receive legal advice from counsel with no business to be conducted at the conclusion of executive session. Need that motion? Bobby?
There you go.
Decker, I need a second.
I'm, I'm seconding that and commending you on the time of this meeting.
Bobby, are. Yeah.
Thank you very much, thank you very much, I accept that.
You're, you're back from Covid and you're sharp.
Back from Covid under two hours?
He didn't break your record from last.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed or abstentions? We are moving into executive session at a record time of seven forty, thank you. High school students, we will sign off on anything you need us to sign off for right now, thank you for coming out.